Mr. Mock, you good? You're good? Thank you, sir. The July fifteenth meeting of the Town Council of the town of Greentown will come to order. You all should have copies of the minutes from the June seventeenth meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June seventeenth. So moved. The motion, I believe that was Mr. Skinner?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the dockets this evening. The general fund docket this evening is two hundred thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and forty-four cents, and includes three payroll statements, payroll vouchers. The wastewater fund docket this evening, seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. The stormwater docket, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents. And, excuse me, the water utility docket, fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. I would entertain a motion to approve the dockets and three payroll vouchers as reviewed and signed in caucus? So moved. A motion from Mr. Standish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the dockets and three payroll vouchers? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. Mr. Peel, you're up, sir.
I have a few things. Mr. Feinsley's building on North Meridian, I've had no contact from Mr. Ruth Lake or any update beyond. I see there are now new openings on the building. So we need to sort out how you want to proceed on that one with regard to Mr. Barton's property on West Peyton. That matter is in litigation. There's a pending summary judgment motion before Judge Elkin. I don't have an exact timeframe for you on that. It will unfold as the judge rules on things.
Okay.
I've had no response on the railroad crossings. I don't know if anyone has spoken to anybody down south. I do have the appraisals, I just got those, but I was out Thursday and Friday, did not have time to do the resolution.
Oh, yeah, that's not a problem.
I'll have that for the next meeting.
We'll just take, yeah, make sure we take action to get down. So on, on one nineteen, one twenty-one North Meridian, just before the meeting, I sent you those photos. As far as I believe, I don't know if anybody else had an opportunity to review them. Those are the items we would like to have addressed, however, he would like to button those up.
We'll address those.
Still concerned about loose machinery, if you would get those to his representation. Mr. Ruth Lake, I appreciate it. Six twenty-four West Peyton Street, we want to just continue that process through the court. I don't recall if I shared the update. I did reach out to Representative Karikoff, and I have a contact to get with the railroad to try to track somebody down. So I will, I will work that with some phone calls. And then following up, you had an opportunity, I assume, to review Resolution twenty-two five dash two.
Yes.
So we will, we will deal with that, and then we'll deal with the properties. So as the community crossing matching grant program has changed, and we were not able to submit an application for this year, either first round or second round, we need to remove the funding that we had in MVH and local roads and streets, because we appropriated it, we're not going to spend it to be able to get the same levy next year. We have to remove it out, say we're going to reduce it, and then we'll bring it back in next year, and we'll have funds to apply towards the matching grant program, which has perhaps a two- or three-year life remaining. A resolution does not require multiple readings, so therefore I'll move on with Resolution twenty-two five dash two, where it's been shown that certain existing appropriations now have unobligated balances that will not be needed for the purposes for which they were appropriated. Now therefore, section one, be it ordained, resolved by the Town Council of the town of Greentown, Howard County, Indiana, that the following existing appropriations will be reduced in the following amounts. Capital outlay, two hundred thousand dollars, that's the total for MVH. Local roads and streets, a reduction of one hundred thousand, for a total reduction of three hundred thousand for twenty-two five. Excuse me. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two five dash two, is read?
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Skinner. Any questions, comments, or discussion on why we're doing this? We'll be able to add the funds to next year's funds and try to get a larger matching grant. And one of the changes to the program in also reducing the number of applications is our match has gone down as well. So that's a positive.
What do you mean, our match has gone down?
It's not twenty-five.
It used to be twenty-five percent, now it's twenty percent.
Our twenty, they're eighty?
Yes. So that'll be a slight benefit. All is in favor of approving Resolution twenty-two five dash two, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And a resolution requires a signature from everyone, so that's on its way down. The next item, trying to recall from the last. I would, for the minutes, I should remember, if we gave you authority to prepare the, to prepare the advertisement for those properties. I don't believe we did.
No, we did not.
We just discussed that we were getting the appraisals.
So I got that down, the old and new.
Yeah, I saw it at the bottom, you want me, I can wait till then, all right. So moving on, then we will go to the application for economic development funds from rescued toys. That was included in your packet that was emailed out before the meeting. They have submitted invoices for both external and internal work done at the facility, signage, electrical work, et cetera. They exceed the amount we match, fifty percent up to twenty-five hundred is the match. So are there any questions on that? If there aren't any, I would entertain a motion to approve the application for economic development for rescued toys at one oh seven North Meridian. For those that aren't aware, that's formerly Etta's Treats, and we had granted her a
So moved.
Deal as well. I have a motion from Mr. Skinner, is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, I'm not sure, I think that was Mr. Lance?
Yeah.
For twenty-five hundred dollars, yes. The application says the amount requested is five, but we, we reduce by fifty percent up to the five. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the application for economic development for rescued toys, and the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't see anyone here from the volunteer fire company?
No, I thought you were talking about rescued toys.
Nope. I know, I saw them, I saw them, they're here. With that, we will move on to Marshall Halleck, you're up, sir, with the police report.
For June, traffic arrests, we had eight, we had fourteen traffic warnings, four ordinance violations, seven cases investigated, two criminal arrests, seventy calls for service, and six accidents were investigated.
Thank you, we will, we will deal with that report right now, man. I would entertain a motion to approve the police report, is read?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Skinner, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish, any questions, comments, or discussion on the police report? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you want to do your item now?
Yeah, I have a, I have another issue I want to do. Todd, can you please stand up? I want to read something here. This is to the town of Greentown Council from Marshall Halleck, date is seven, one, twenty-two five. Subject is Deputy Marshal Todd Everling letter of commendation. On six, twenty-six, twenty-two five, while providing an off-duty security detail at the Kokomo Nursing Home, at a Kokomo Nursing Home, Deputy Marshal Todd Everling was in fully marked assigned Greentown police vehicle when he was approached by a female that was driving by the location that Deputy Marshal Everling was assigned to. The female told Deputy Marshal Everling that she felt obligated to tell a police officer of a situation that she was concerned about. She told Deputy Marshal Everling that she had observed him, she decided to approach him with her concern. The female went on to tell Deputy Marshal Everling of a murder-for-hire situation that she was aware of. Deputy Marshal Everling began talking, taking pertinent information from the female regarding her name, address, and phone number. Deputy Marshal Everling also gathered both the suspect's name and information, as well as the intended victim's name and information. After gathering all the information that he could from the female complainant, Deputy Marshal Everling notified the Kokomo Police Department Detective Division to inform them what was reported to him. Subsequently, the Kokomo Police Detective Division investigated the report that was provided by Deputy Marshal Everling. During the investigation, an undercover detective arranged a meeting with the suspect on June twenty-seventh, twenty-two five, which was the next, the very next day. During the meeting, an agreement was made between the suspect and an undercover detective. After the meeting, a Kokomo police officer conducted a traffic stop of the suspect, and he was taken into custody and charged with conspiracy to commit murder, a level-two felony, before the intended victim was harmed in any way. The suspect was identified as thirty-six-year-old Andrew Eldridge. If Deputy Marshal Everling had not passed on the information that he had received while working security at another location, is almost certain during the investigation that the intended victim would have been harmed or killed. I recommend at this time that Deputy Marshal Todd Everling be recognized for going above and beyond his actions. We have a plaque made for him, so congratulations, good job.
That's what I'm talking about.
This is your letter?
Can I hang it up?
This is yours, not mine.
Good job.
Congratulations. Thank you. I have one more thing.
Thank you, please continue, Marshall Halleck.
Marty, can you please stand up?
To the town of Greentown Council, from Marshal Heath Halleck, date seven twenty-eight, twenty-two three. He's been recognized for this, but then we're going to make it official. Subject Deputy Marshal Monte Arvin. On seven twenty-seven, twenty-two three, at seven oh five P.M., a nine-one-one call was received at the Howard County Dispatch Center of the drowning in progress at Beaver Point Campground at one zero, one-six-two East, five hundred South. Deputy Marshal Monte Arvin was on duty as a Greentown officer when the call was dispatched. Deputy Marshal Arvin responded to the emergency call, as he was in all probability closer than any other first responders due to the location of the campgrounds. Officer Arvin arrived unseen at seven eleven P.M. Officer Arvin was directed to a body of water located on the north side of the office. Officer Arvin observed two females looking for an eight-year-old boy. The female stated that the boy had went underwater and not come up, and showed Arvin where the body, where the boy had gone under. Officer Arvin looked into the pond, but cannot see anything due to the murkiness of the water. Officer Arvin and a Howard County Sheriff's deputy who had arrived on scene immediately shed their ballistic vest, gun belt, and entered the water in attempts to locate and rescue the boy. Deputy Marshal Arvin dove down into the dark murky water, approximately ten feet deep, in attempts to locate the boy. The eight-year-old boy was not located at that time. The Howard County dive team arrived, and after a short time, they were able to locate the boy and brought him to the surface where lifesaving measures were taken in attempts to revive him. The boy was transported to Howard Regional Hospital where he was pronounced dead. Deputy Marshal Arvin, without hesitation, unselfishly entered the murky deep water, putting his own life at risk in the deep water to save a child. Deputy Marshal Arvin showed extreme bravery, unselfishness in the performance of his duties to serve and protect his citizens without thinking of his own safety. Deputy Marshal Arvin went above and beyond the performance of his duties in the town of Greentown and its citizens, should be proud to have such a professional, caring, and brave person protecting them. I recommend that Deputy Marshal Monte Arvin be recognized for the heroic actions that he performed. And we also have a plaque for you.
I had to trick them to get them all here.
Thank you, Marshall Halleck, and we do all truly appreciate the first responders that work for the town of Greentown, actually care for the town of Greentown would be much better word. Thank you all, appreciate it. Moving on this evening, in reports, we move to the water utility report for June. The maximum daily flow was two hundred and one thousand, six hundred gallons. The minimum daily flow, one hundred and four thousand, nine hundred gallons, for an average daily flow of one hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seven gallons. Total pumped for June, four million, two hundred and six thousand, two hundred gallons. And for June, we had seven disconnects, and currently, at the time of the report, there were no other disconnects. Two TCR tests, that's the total chloroform test, performed with both satisfactory, absent from I.D.M. and reported to I.D.M., red meters, completed customer service, orders, data logs, and non-paid turn-on, turn-offs. Avalon Court, main replacement project is substantially complete, and they're waiting for a final walkthrough, and all restoration has been completed. Hydrant maintenance and water main flushing has been completed. There was a water main break at five twenty-nine Uncle Tom, and a valve flange leak at Mill and Grant Streets. Assisted with the wastewater plant testing, and assisted the street department with brush and trash, and assisted the utility office in replacing trash and recycled toders. I would like to add to this report, you're not aware, I got a message late on the Uncle Tom break, and the guys were up all night dealing with that. And the main turned out to be larger than he thought. They have to get people out of bed, they've got to call in emergency locates, they got the whole crew up. All, every, all-town employees were out on that, it was all hands on deck. They weren't done until the morning. When I get another message, that they just worked all night, and there's now a water main break at Mill Street and Grant. And is it okay if they call in another company to do the repair? Because they've been up all night, you know, the guys were home sleeping. And I'm like, absolutely, you know, it was going to happen anyway, but I just appreciated it. And then I didn't hear again until almost, would be almost thirty-six hours before they were really complete, because our two supervisors had to stay on to do valving. Even though another company came in, they don't know our system, so they have to do valving to allow them to do the repair. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So it's a, it's a twenty-four-seven deal. Wow. So a lot of stuff tonight. But I would entertain a motion to approve the report as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Lance, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the street department report for June. Performed all locates for Indiana eight-one-one, assisted with water plant operation, testing, and meter disconnect reconnects, replaced asphalt on North Meridian Street, assisted with the water main break and valve flange leak, as I said, that was all hands on deck. Assisted with the hydrant maintenance and water main flushing, swept the town streets and removed brush and leaf bags, removed debris from the storm drains, sprayed for weeds around town properties and alleys, mowed the town properties, picked up trash from bins and streets around town, replaced customer trash and recycled toders, and maintained town vehicles, so that is necessary. I would entertain a motion to approve the street department report as presented.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Skinner, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish, any questions, comments, or discussion on the street department report? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the wastewater report for June. We operated at sixty-nine percent of the point-five-eight million gallon per day design. We had six-point-four-seven inches of rainfall, pardon me, four hundred and two thousand gallon per day was the average treatment, and the total treated for the month was twelve million, sixty-seven thousand gallons. Performed all routine sampling and testing, general cleaning and maintenance, ran out two Geo bags, and performed service on the raw and final auto samplers. I guess that was this month still. I would entertain a motion to approve the wastewater report as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance, any questions, comments, or discussion on the wastewater report? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to old and new business, Marshall Halleck, you're up, sir.
I have nothing new at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Skinner?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Lance?
Yeah, I don't think we can thank the guys enough for what they do and how they're at the ready all the time. Our police officers obviously outstanding.
Absolutely.
Team, great town to live in, great, great, the whole municipality is just, it's a, I had just a quick testimony, I had my sister-in-law and brother-in-law here from Virginia Beach, and they come every year to visit us, but they specifically come to the fair because they really enjoy that Midwestern culture, they like, they just, from where they're from, they just love Greentown. And it just, I want to say thank you to them so much for that. And I want to thank Nick, I thank you guys for investing in our town. I know the Greentown markets stunk a bunch of money in Greentown. We have a new automotive place in town, so there's a business going on here in town, it's a great place to live. And I just want to say thanks to everybody, not just, not just the staff and employees, but the town. Everybody that lives here has a, has a hand in it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lance.
Can I, can we back up?
Sure.
I do want to recognize the other guys. Without these other guys, they do a lot of behind-the-scenes, I know Matt had to leave, he had to go to another meeting. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes things that people have no idea what they're doing, and they're reserves, they don't get paid. But they do a lot of things off-duty that people don't realize. So, and when they're working, they, they are working. So it's not to say that Todd and Monte do any more work than anybody else, they just happen to be in the right place at the right time when these incidences happen. But these guys are great at what they do, they're professional, and they really bring a lot to the table for this town. So I just want to appreciate Sergeant Sprague, as well as Reserve Deputy, or Reserve Officer Westfall.
Thank you. Completely agree. Ms. Everling?
Just agree with everything they've all said.
Tough act to follow it.
It is.
Mr. Standish?
One of the things that we sometimes lose sight on, we talk about you living in a town, the community. I mean, the definition of the community are common, we're working together. And the kind of servant leadership that flies behind, below the radar. And I know some people, and they, when they, you know, they don't want the accolades, they'll say, hey, this is part of my job. This is what I do. Don't make it, it's part of the duty. It's, it's more than that. When you're doing the things that you are doing, sacrificing your wellness to try to save someone, going the extra mile in very well saving someone's life, getting out of bed in the morning when you don't have to. Those are the things that are above and beyond. There's a lot of heart there. We hear a lot about servant leadership. I think it's important for all of us to hear this kind of stuff reflect back. We've got some people doing some great things in a great community, and we're connected by those things, which makes it a great place to be and to raise a family, so thank you so much. And we miss a lot of opportunities, I'm sure, to recognize those things. So, you know, we take things for granted, so thanks for keeping this a great place to be and for, and for serving.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Standish. With that, Teresa kept me on track that the appraisals for Harvey Drive were down under old business. We have those, they've been provided to the council for review. You saw the values there. Is there any, if I recall, we, we advertise them at the appraised value, notify the adjoining property owners, and while it's published, but we can also notify the adjoining property owners. They can respond to the bid, and the town can choose to enter negotiations with them for first right of refusal on the property, if I recall.
That's effectively correct.
That pretty will sum it up, my name, get all the legal terms correctly.
Can't notice it until we pass the resolution.
Correct.
So that's what I'll have for the next meeting, and then after that's approved, then you can advertise.
Yeah. So is there any issue with authorizing Mr. Peel to prepare for an advertisement? All right, then we're good. I know of no reason to meet on August fifth, so the next meeting of the Town Council will be August nineteenth. And with that, we'll open it up to guests this evening. Going once, going twice. Mr. Hill, please approach the podium and state your name and address and concern, sir.
Gary Hill, ten twenty-one East Crest Drive, last house on the right. I'm here to make another, a little award, certainly not as much as the others given out, but I was at a meeting of the Greentown Historical Society earlier today, and talking about all the projects they have going on, and one of them is the maintenance of their old antique building over there. And some of the outside wall reconstruction that's going on, one of the things they had to do was get it washed down, and the Historical Society did not have anything to do with water, so whoever was doing it, the construction group that was doing it, got permission to hook up to the city water. So they used, I don't know how much, water to clean up that building so that it can be continued working on. So they really wanted to put out a card to Scott Dale, but I said, told him that I would present it here tonight to the whole town council because, thank you to the city of Greentown for supplying all those hundreds of gallons of water that they needed for that. So here's the card.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
And everybody that's been signed up.
Well, thank you, sir. And I know it appears that the work is done. I know the bucket's still there, I think he has some work to do on the roof yet, a little bit, I heard. Yeah, yeah. So thank you very much. Signed by the committee, Scott, and actually, we go to the full council here. Thank you so much for your help in allowing the Greentown Historical Society to use the town's water supply so we could complete our restoration project. We truly appreciate it. Joyce Jaeger, building chair, and then the full board, so thank you all very much for what you do. Any other guests this evening? Yes, sir?
Hi, Adam Smith Combs, 107 North Meridian, Rescued Toys. First, I want to say thank you guys for having the money available to get back at church a couple weeks ago. We talked about not having money, or having money that you were going to get, planning on using it for something, and then, and it shows up right when you need it, so really appreciate that. Also appreciate the town. In my opening, when we got our grand opening, one of the things I said was, I grew up, grew up here, went high school, thought, why would anybody want to live here? But as you grow up, you realize this is where you want your kids to go. When we adopted them, we drove them from Kokomo here, and we got a chance to move here, and we did, and we wanted to open a toy store in Greentown. So, appreciate you all, appreciate the town.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for locating your business here. Any other guests this evening? You're between the end of the meeting and cupcakes over there, so. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And motion from Mr. Skinner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Standish, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, thank you all.